I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, I'd like to welcome everyone who's in the audience. Thank you for coming. I want to start this meeting with a prayer.
Let's pray. Father God, just we thank you this day for all you do for us. Thank you, dear Lord, for the love and the grace and the mercy you've given us since the day that we were born. We ask you now to just use us to make decisions that will be pleasing in your sight, dear Lord. We thank you, dear Lord, for the opportunity to serve the people of our county and serve you. We ask you to use us to tell everybody we know, everybody we've come in contact with about your love and what you've done in our lives. In Christ's name, we pray.
Amen.
Freedom of information announcement in accordance with the South Carolina Code of Law nineteen seventy-six as amended, Marion Star Mullins Enterprise has been notified of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting. Before going further, Councilman Joe Rogers wants you all to know that he's attending an Economic Development Conference, and he's online listening at the meeting. So he is here on the call. Can you hear us, Joe? Joe?
He's on even.
Oh, he's okay. Public meeting for Chavis Watford pursuant to Section four-nine-six-twenty of the South Carolina Code of Laws. At this time, we want to turn it over to our attorney, David Epperson.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Tenny. Present to Section four-nine-six-twenty of the South Carolina Code of Law, a notification of termination has been provided to Ms. Watford through her attorney. Further, the public meeting requested by Ms. Watford has been properly scheduled pursuant to Section four-nine-six-twenty of the South Carolina Code of Laws. The reasons for the termination from the position of Marion County Administrator are as follows. Termination letter. Dear Ms. Watford, please be advised that on July tenth, twenty twenty-five, Marion County Council voted to terminate your employment as Marion County Administrator effective immediately. As you may be aware, your employment contract has not been approved by the new Marion County Council since it took office in January twenty twenty-five. As a result, your contract is considered void and its terms are not applicable. Council would kindly ask that you kindly vacate your office and return all property of Marion County, South Carolina, in your possession to the Marion County Deputy County Administrator by five P M. on Friday, July eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Property of the county shall include but not be limited to computers, cell phones, keys, facility entry cards, credit cards, and county-owned vehicles. Pursuant to Section four-nine-six-twenty of the South Carolina Code of Laws, you are being terminated due to significant deficiencies in the internal controls and operations of the county during your time as Marion County Administrator. More specifically, these deficiencies are as follows: failure to address budget variances, absence of preparation of annual financial statements and disclosures, inadequate segregation of staff duties, inadequate maintenance of financial records, absence of records to support bank reconciliations for fiduciary agents relating to the amount of funds maintained in bank accounts, absence of centralization of grant monitoring, issues involving dispersment procedures relating to purchase orders and noncompliance with the county's procurement policy, ultimately untimely deposits of county funds, failure to deposit county funds, failure to adequately identify the county's final annual budget document, failure to monitor reporting related to the FAA Airport Improvement Program, and failure to adequately manage and address the private use of county-owned equipment. Also pursuant to Section four-nine-six-twenty, you are provided the right to a hearing at a public meeting of council. Within five days after the notice of removal is delivered, you may file a written request for a public hearing with council. This hearing shall be held at a meeting of council not earlier than twenty days nor later than thirty days after the request is filed. You may also file a written reply with council not later than five days before the public hearing. Also, as a supplement to the termination letter, a letter received from the Independent Accountants' Report on Applying Agreed-Upon Procedures: Marion County's management is responsible for the procurement policy and procedures of Marion County, the adequacy and appropriateness of the agreed-upon procedures, including the completeness and appropriateness of the dispersments related to ground maintenance contracts, the details of the general ledger account for the building maintenance department's animal shelter improvements expenditures, the details and appropriateness of any roofing contracts provided for testing, the information supplied for Fund three-oh-seven capital sales tax used specifically for any payments of salary or salary increases. Marion County Management has agreed to and acknowledges that the procedures performed are appropriate to meet the intended purposes as requested by Marion County Council. The report may not be suitable for any other purpose. The procedures performed may not address all the items of interest to a user of this report and may not meet the needs of all users of this report, and as such, users are responsible for determining whether the procedures performed are appropriate for their purposes. The procedures and associated findings are as follows. Number one procedure, the general ledger account one-hundred-four-fifty dash eight-hundred fifty-two dash fourteen, animal shelter improvements was analyzed for the period July first, twenty twenty-three through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and dispersments greater than one thousand dollars were selected for adherence with the procurement policy and procedures for any evidence of misconduct. Dispersions were tested for invoice documentation, purchase order preparation, approval by Department Director, approval by Administrator, and if appropriate, whether bids or quotes were obtained when required. Findings: forty-two dispersions were tested with the following exceptions noted: thirty-two purchase orders were not obtained or were prepared after the purchase or service, one dispersment lacked director approval, fifteen lacked administrative approval, thirty lacked the necessary bids or quotes, three discrepancies with inadequate invoice documentation. Number two, the minutes in the general ledger account for the Department of Buildings and Maintenance were read looking for roofing contracts. Findings: the only items found were bids issued for roofing of the Clerk of Court Building and the multipurpose building and an invoice for museum roofing repairs. The original roofing bids for the Clerk of Court Building and multipurpose building were not on file for our analysis. The only information available was the recap of the bids received in the first rebid. The Administrator provided the documents for the final rebid for our review that was handled by an outside source. The bids, the recap of the bids, and the sign-in sheet were provided. The repairs for the museum were completed by D. Graham Group for eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. Two informal bids were attached from D. Graham Group for eighteen thousand five hundred dollars and J. W. Contractors for fourteen thousand. There was no explanation as to why the low bid was not taken. I saw no evidence of council approval. Number three, Fund three-oh-seven, the Capital Sales Tax Fund, was analyzed for the period July first, twenty twenty-three through May fifth, twenty twenty-five, for any salary or salary increases or any ground maintenance contracts paid by this fund. Findings: there were no salaries or salary increases posted paid by this fund in the time period analyzed. There were eight items from the ground maintenance contracts charged to Fund three-oh-seven. Dispersions tested. Contractor WGC twelve thousand five hundred dollars, beautification invoices states, schedule attached, but there was no schedule. WGC twenty-eight thousand dollars for installation of Mulch Sellers Park and five-oh-one sign. WGC three thousand dollars for removal and replacement of Mulch Nichols Park, Lostback Landscaping for seven thousand dollars, herbicides, fire, and ant killer, grass, seed, and fertilizer eleven locations, some not recreation locations, Lostback Landscaping for sixteen thousand, Safford Building and Centenary Outdoor Wellness Center landscaping rocks, Lostback Landscaping for fourteen thousand, restructuring landscaping at five-oh-one South Sign and clean fence lines at six locations, Lostback Landscaping for seven thousand five hundred dollars, Centenary Community Center pressure washing, and Lostback Landscaping for seven thousand dollars, storm cleanup, and ant killer at eleven locations. The Capital Sales Tax Project that these expenditures were posted to was approved as project number eleven, Marion County Recreation Facilities Expansion. Number four, we were provided with the attached list of transactions from three contractors to test for compliance with the county procurement policy and for any evidence of misconduct. The three contractors were related to beautification contracts. Findings: Marion County awarded bids for long grounds maintenance to three contractors for thirty-two locations divided into three sections, which included monthly mowing, trimming of grass areas, trimming of hedges, and ground maintenance. It also included straw replacement, herbicide application, and landscaping timber replacement to be reimbursed one time a year with the approval of the park director. Section one was awarded to Lostback Landscaping for three thousand five hundred dollars per month. Of the dispersments payable to Lostback Landscaping, we tested a total of twenty-five items for proper invoice documentation, purchase order preparation, proper code and classification, director approval, administrative approval, and that bids or quotes were obtained when necessary. Four dispersions had improper invoice documentation, twenty-four had no purchase orders or purchase orders prepared after the service. As noted above, there were five items posted to Fund three-oh-seven, the Capital Sales Tax Fund. One item lacked director approval, twenty-four items lacked administrative approval, nineteen items were paid for more than the approved bid or no bid or quote was received. In December of twenty twenty-three, the monthly billing increased from the awarded bid amount of three thousand five hundred dollars to four thousand one hundred fifty dollars with no explanation. In April two thousand twenty-four, new locations were added with no evidence of approval. Also, additional services without additional quotes increased to eight thousand two hundred fifty dollars continued at eight thousand dollars. Section two was awarded to WGC Services LLC for four thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars and fourteen cents per month. This company is owned by the husband of the Administrator. One of the dispersments payable to WGC was tested. A total of forty items for proper invoice documentation, purchase order preparation, proper code and classification, director approval, administrative approval, and that bids or quotes were obtained when necessary. Thirty-five dispersions had no purchase order or purchase orders were prepared after the service. As noted on the previous page, there were three items posted to Fund three-oh-seven, the Capital Sales Tax Fund. Two items were posted to the Law Enforcement Training Center Grant without any approval from the Sheriff's Department. Thirty-two items lacked administrative approval. Seventeen items were paid for more than the approved bid or for which additional bids or quotes were not received. Most of the invoices were noted as do not mail. Two had notations to give to Chavis. Section three was awarded to Lighthouse Maintenance for three thousand seven hundred sixty dollars per month. Other dispersments payable to Lighthouse, we tested a total of twenty-one items for proper invoice documentation, purchase order preparation, proper code and classification, director approval, administrative approval, and that bids or quotes were obtained when necessary. One invoice appeared to be overpaid by paying the requisition amount and the invoice amount. Twenty dispersions had no purchase order or purchase orders were prepared after the service. Eighteen dispersions lacked administrative approval. Three dispersions lacked director approval. One item was misclassified by being posted to Department number four-oh-one. In March two thousand twenty-four, additional property was added with no evidence of rebidding. The price increased to four thousand five hundred dollars and later dropped to four thousand three hundred dollars. One dispersment for additional services with no quotes. Many invoices were notated as do not mail. Three had notations to give to Hillary from Economic Development. We were engaged by Marion County to perform this agreed-upon procedures engagement and conducted our certificate engagement in accordance with the testa-attestation standards established by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. Engagement is separate from our engagement to conduct and audit the financial statements of Marion County. With these agreed-upon procedures engaged, we are not engaged and did not conduct an examination review engagement on the specific accounts identified in this report, the object objective of which we would be the expression of an opinion or conclusion respectively on the Building Maintenance Department's annual, Department's Animal Shelter Improvement expenditures, and Roofing Contracts Compliance and Analysis of Fund three-oh-seven Capital Sales Tax Fund for any payments of salary or salary increases or ground maintenance contracts and on the grounds maintenance contracts transactions listed on the attached schedule of Marion County during the period July one, twenty twenty-three through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Accordingly, we do not express such an opinion or conclusion. Had we performed additional procedures, other matters may have come to our attention that would have been forwarded to you. We are required to be independent of Marion County and to meet our other ethical responsibilities in accordance with the relevant ethical requirements related to our agreed-upon procedures and engagement. This report is intended solely for the information and use of Marion County Council and is not intended to be and should not be used by anyone other than those specified parties. Kenneth Cobb and Company, P C.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. At this time, we want to turn over to Ms. Chavis Watford and her attorney. I would ask you to stay within thirty minutes of the time, okay?
Right, sir. My name is Jean. Can I let you know I've met all of you on the floor? The hardest thing a lawyer can do is try to turn something around that's already been decided by seven people. And so what I would start by telling you is that what's been said tonight doesn't say anything about what really needs to be looked at. And what needs to be looked at is the two-page contract that you all agreed to with Ms. Watford a year ago. And that contract only has one provision in it for dismissal. And that provision is, and I don't know you know this, but I'll remind you, provided however, then the event Watford is terminated because of her conviction of any felony involving personal gain to her, then in that event, county shall have no obligation to pay her. And there's not been any allegation, nor has there been any conviction, nor has there been any indictment of Ms. Watford for any criminal or wrongdoing. And there's not going to be, as you all know, because that's been looked at and it's been decided that's not there. She committed no crime. So what we would ask you to do is look at the terms of the contract you all agreed to back in two thousand twenty-four and honor that contract because it is an agreement between you all and this Watford and this argument that it's a new council and I've seen that in some of the documents too. It's the same council. All of y'all voted to work for this contract in twenty twenty-four, and all of y'all are the same people. It's not the situation in other case law that y'all probably been told about where a council lost election and then gave somebody a sweetheart deal. One of those famous cases is one where a council lost election and gave an administrator a ten-year contract. That's not the case here. Everybody on this council agreed to give her a contract with one provision. You do something criminal and you're out. Now, we don't, I don't disagree that you all don't have the right to terminate her. You can terminate her for any reason that you wanted, but the only reason you can't pay her under a contract is for criminal malfeasance. And there is no criminal malfeasance in this case, and I challenge anybody to find that. So what I just heard and what y'all have just heard is a list of issues, finance issues, contract issues, some issues regarding roofing contracts, some issues regarding some landscape contracts. None of that has anything to do with any criminal activity. Those are mistakes. And so mistakes that are made in county government are made all the time. Unfortunately, I've been in the position of having to be in a hearing like this before for other administrators. And what I've found in representing them over the past is that the administrator is kind of like the Carolina football coach. The first day he gets in the office, everybody's excited about what he's going to do. And then the last day, when he's not winning games, he gets fired. Everybody's arguing about his contract and how much he's got to pay him. I mean, it's the same issue here, gentlemen. The only thing you really need to consider is the contract that y'all signed and y'all agreed to. And everybody agreed to the contract to begin with. So I don't think you have to, all the other issues, sure, you want to fire for any of those issues, you're certainly entitled to, but this contract still stands on its own, and it doesn't say anything at all about her being the finance director, running the finance department, checking each invoice to make sure, and I think you all agree, there are two hundred fifty people working for the Marion County. There's thirty-three departments, thirty-three. There's one administrator, and as I understand it, one part-time deputy administrator, half the year, has got other business with the legislature. And so how would you expect one person to do all that job and the finance job? And so I would point out to you that, that as I understand it, Ms. Watford came to you all some time ago and said, we need a finance director. And she asked about that and said, that's something we really need to try to get this, get the county on firm footing. And what I heard tonight from the county's attorneys was they're not accepted practices from the Journal or the Association of CPAs. I think Ms. Watford agrees. She's not a CPA. She never said she would be a CPA. She is a manager, and a manager has to have all the tools they need to get what they need to do something. So let me just talk to you briefly about the, I'm not going to talk to you about all the bill particulars, because I don't think you need to worry about those. The only thing I think you need to look at is the contract you all agreed to. And the
Excuse me, sir.
I'll call it ten reasons why.
Excuse me, sir. Will you speak up to the microphone?
I will. Thank you. Thank you. I'll call it ten reasons why you all want to fire her. And as I said before, you can certainly terminate her for any one of these reasons, but we still have to go back to the language of the contract. And so the first thing that I heard was a failure to address budget variances. Well, all of you all know, and the historical record for Marion County will show that there have been budget variances in Marion County for many years. This isn't the first time. In fact, in two thousand and twenty-four, there was a one million dollar surplus, a one million dollar surplus. Watford, during her, during her tenure, attended every budget meeting that was held, every one, and only one budget meeting did she ask to be excused for a few hours ahead of time. She attempted to prepare financial statements and disclosures and to work with the finance people to do that. The second thing is she, she actually asked that financial professionals be hired, and she asked the council to increase the starting salary if she thought it was too low in order to get a CPA to be the finance director. She also, in July of twenty twenty-five, she hired, with y'all's understanding, strategic alliances, and a development and operational plan was presented to the council at that time. Those were her attempts to try to do something about this particular financial troubles that have just been talked about. One of the other things was that was argued in the, the third thing that was argued in the letter of dismissal was aggregation or adequate segregation of staff duties. And one of the things that was noted in there was missing deposits. That was documented, and as you all know, SLED had been contacted, and they're investigating. There's no evidence from anyone that Ms. Watford was involved in those deposits. In fact, some of those deposits were before she became a county administrator. In truth, the segregation of staff duties is a problem because there are not enough people to do all of the work that needs to be done. And that's not just a problem here. It's a problem in every county in South Carolina. You have that going on in big counties and in small counties. The failure to get a CPA for the county is a problem, not that Ms. Watford didn't ask for, but the council decided they did not want to pay for. So some of the other arguments that I've heard advanced, the first annual budget, something about the budget. We maintain the budget was timely presented. There were seven budget workshops. Ms. Watford was at all of them. She was available to discuss those at any time. Another thing I've heard is that, and it's in the letters, are the FAA Airport Budget Document. And as you all know, that was a new process. When she found out, she talked to a consultant and got that resolved. The next thing on the bill particulars, I'll call it, was the council's approval of salaries or positions. Ms. Watford determined that some of the salaries violated federal law, violated the F S L A, and so she immediately tried to resolve that. She was never told that she couldn't do anything about changing salaries or increasing or decreasing them. And in fact, the only document that she was given was the contract, which is one and a half pages. The, there's also, I also heard an argument about an incorrect expenditure of capital funds. I challenge that based on a letter that was presented by the Department of Revenue dated May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. A letter was presented to this council in Ms. Watford that said the county was in compliance for the entire period back about ten years to May of two thousand twenty-five. The private use of county equipment apparently is an issue. Ms. Watford was not involved in the bidding process. The bidding process was done by others. Ms. Watford, when she found out about that, she immediately rectified that issue. Now, let me just give you some final thoughts. I don't think this is a hard issue. I think the real issue is, is this council going to honor what they agreed to in January two thousand and twenty-four, which if this council wants to terminate Ms. Watford, they're free to do so for any reason. However, I would ask you all, all of you all, to look at the contract and see what you agreed to with Ms. Watford. She was the former H R Director, and the contract provided that she was to be the Administrator with one proviso that she not be convicted of any crime. And she's not been convicted of any crime. She's not been indicted. She's not been under any type of investigation. There's no allegation that she stole any money, took anything from the county. When we received the letter, when she received the letter saying she was to vacate the premises, she did so. She returned all the county equipment. She returned the vehicle, the computer. There's not any issue in that regard. And so really, what we're, what we're asking you all to do is honor the contract that you agreed to back in two thousand and twenty-four if you want to fire her. The contract also provides, as you all know, that if she's ready, willing, and able to continue, that she will do so, and she is ready, willing, and able to continue. So I thank you for your time. I do want to ask, there's some people that want to speak besides myself, and I'd ask some of those people to come forward. I'd ask the Treasurers to vote.
Good evening. For those of you who do not know, my name is Alta DeBose. I am in my second term as Treasurer of Marion County. I met Chavis Watford when she was hired as the Director of H R for Marion County in twenty twenty-one. Over time, I discovered her to be a quietly devout and caring person, enthusiastic about doing all she could for the betterment of the county. Her interpersonal skills, work ethic, and dedication to Marion County, it's a great place to live and work, made her extremely effective in her tasks. In February twenty twenty-three, when it was recommended that she become interim Administrator, I felt that she could bring a fresh energy to the job. She could nurture a team-building spirit. But I also knew from my own experience that she was accepting a challenging task that would require growth and effort. I think Mrs. Watford's experience mirrors my own move into treasury, and I understand a lot about that journey, that journey that she's made in two and a half years. Because in twenty eighteen, I was asked to run for Treasurer, to be only the third Treasurer in Marion County in about forty years. My initial few years were a whirlwind, learning about the office processes, the responsibilities, and also coming face to face with how difficult it is to keep Marion County finances on track after two decades of industry and job loss, population decline, skilled worker shortage, and tax-based linkage. I saw Mrs. Watford attack her new duties with enthusiasm, putting in the hard work and the long hours. She brought in optimism, openness to change, and a commitment to employee growth and learning. I saw her successfully implement our first new financial system since, I think, the I saw her successfully implement our first new financial system since I think the eighties. Did Mrs. Watford have the entire skill set she needed for her new position? No. But she was a proven manager. She was known for duty and diligence. Did she work hard to gain new skills? Yes. Did she make some missteps along the way? Sure she did. And like the best of us, owned up to them, tried to fix them and forged ahead. And I think those attributes are a hallmark of leadership. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. I'll be brief. My name is Vicki Cook. I'm not a public speaker, but I thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm a lifelong resident of Marion County. I have worked for the county for 19 years. I am currently serving as the county auditor. I work for taxpayers of Marion County. I have served in the auditor's office for all 19 years with the exception of nine months when I was in accounts payable in the finance department. Tonight, I am speaking only of my experience. I have worked under three county administrators. Ms. Chavis Watford has been a wonderful person to work with. As I am an elected official, she wasn't my supervisor, but we had a really good rapport, both professionally and personally. Communication was easy. I truly believe that her having human resources, background and experience provided her with additional skills and qualities that served her well for the position of administrator. First, she is very approachable. She listens to you. She works with you and offers her assistance in coming to a solution as issues arise. That to me is a great leader. My department is small. I have two employees who are just wonderful. We are a busy office of three as we help taxpayers and we generate every tax notice in this county on taxable property on many classifications. I do have a smaller budget as compared to other departments. So budget review time and the processes were typically straightforward and simpler. And most more simple as I only request the bare minimum and spend what is necessary to operate. Mrs. Watford came on with Marion County in 2021 as the human resources director and selected as interim county administrator in February 2023. And then named our administrator in early 2024. I observed and I feel that since she came on board, employee morale changed and it has been refreshing. I felt, we felt part of a team. At monthly department head meetings, she would say, we need to do this. Not you or y'all need to do this. She told us multiple times, we are in this together. There is a phrase, my door is always open. I had never heard this phrase before in department head meetings or employee, employee meetings or gatherings. Every time I needed time to speak with her, I was heard and I was given the time for whatever issue. Good, cordial, open communication is important. It is crucial. Working together as a team in a pleasant, welcoming working environment is also important and crucial. Having considerate and approachable working relationships is vital. It means a lot. It means a great deal to staff, employees and workers. These things I have mentioned, um, I will conclude and just say that employee morale, as I have witnessed in this building especially, has been better than it's ever been in my 19 years with the county. Thank you.
Um, a little outspoken and I'm going to say something really brief. Uh, I met Ms. Watford a few years ago as we're trying to build in the county. We moved here about four years ago. Had some problems and our initial, um, interactions were a little bit tense. But I came quickly to respect her. Um, smart woman, really cares about our county. I do not have any doubt from what was read that she had any bad influence in those decisions. I was in corporate America for almost 30 years, over 500 people. There were people that made mistakes below me. We fire them. We take care of discipline. Then we do whatever. That happens. I believe that's what happens here and you're holding her accountable for things when she did the right thing. To me, and this is just my personal opinion, and my husband may be shrinking right now because I usually say in my mind. To me, it appears Ms. Watford's being scapegoated. I don't know why as a county we're so afraid to move forward. We live in a wonderful county in the beautiful state of South Carolina. But we're one of the poorest counties in this state. Why? We don't have to be. We have to have people caring about our community, being transparent and wanting to move forward. And I do believe that's what she's trying to do. I don't know. Maybe she made some mistakes. I can tell you as a national ADP for Aetna, I made mistakes. But I did the best I could and I did good for what my company did for my employees, always. We've only been here four years. We've lived in a lot of states, but I've never seen the cloud of secrecy that I see in Marion County with this county council. I'm not trying to be negative, but the transparency, we can't see the budget before it's approved. There's lots of things we, we don't see. There's ordinances that aren't ever written, but we're supposed to be held accountable to. Um, those things can be improved and we should. This is a wonderful county. We want to move forward. But you guys got to listen to the people and keep good employees that really care about what we're doing. I do believe Ms. Watford strives for transparency and that may be scary to some, to some people in power. I don't know. That's the only way we're going to move forward. When I worked for Aetna, everybody knows healthcare is not transparent. I was part of the push to move transparency in pricing. Lots of resistance, really scary, could affect the bottom line. But it really is the best for everybody. The only way we can move forward is to release some of the stringent control, allow some innovative thinking and allow our beautiful county to really progress forward. I have tried with my representative. I have very limited communication. We need that communication. We need that openness. We need people who want to try and move forward. I do believe that was Ms. Watford. That's all I have. Thank you for listening.
My name is Cheryl Colgrove. I'm with Support Our Shelter, as most of you know and have seen me before here. Um, I just want to say on behalf of Support Our Shelter that from June of last year till present, when our new board took over, we have worked closely with Mrs. Watford and the county, uh, animal shelter director in helping the county maintain things at the shelter, feed the animals and get medical care outside of what you guys would have paid for. I think we've improved the conditions of the office out there for the staff, the conditions for the animals. And I want to say that we thank her for working with us. You guys may not be aware, but as of the last year and a half, Support Our Shelter has spent in excess of $80,000 with her help. So I think that, you know, you guys did the right thing when you made her the administrator. She brought new life to this county. And I hear a lot of people in the county say that with her leadership, they're becoming respectful of our county again. That's all I have to say.
I'm Al Teague and, um, I'm resident, uh, citizen of Marion County. And we, I spoke off about the budget not being open. But I'm, I'm kind of part of a group and we've been meeting for probably several years. Trying to get a grasp. Initially, we started looking at national elections and kind of said, well, that's hopeless. And so we started looking locally. And we're really trying not to come in and disrupt anything. We're just trying to find that information and what's going on. Make sure we know how, uh, county works. Uh, one of the great things about this opportunity has been Ms. Watford. We've been able to go to her and eventually she dishes us off to her assistant. And they get it. She gives us information when she, when we ask. We also set up kind of quarterly meetings. So if we have two or three issues, she gives us a period of time to talk about them and she gets us whatever she cans and, and then we go from there. And, you know, we have a lot of questions. But when you have someone that's willing to talk to you and meet with you, you know, and work with you, we feel confident that things will be okay, even if our questions have big questions. You know, the, uh, I hate, I will mention that the county audits, the three audits that y'all, that we've gotten a hold of and seen. You know, it's got recommendations at the end of those audits for tightening up the physical constraints of this county. It's all over the place. Uh, however, you know, we're just now getting into the budget because we just got it, but there are a lot of concerns, but what I'm saying is when you're working with people you can trust and they can go back and forth with you, then we're going to try to lay off you guys and try to just work things out ourselves. And then if we've got an issue, I do have an issue on paper ballots. But when we do have that, then you'll hear from us on that. But on day-to-day operations and stuff, she's been excellent. And, and, uh, the most impressive things was when y'all first voted to not hire her. When you had that vote, it was three to three or whatever your time. In that meeting, the meeting was full like it is tonight. And the lady next to me, I said, why are you there? Cause usually it's just us two or three old fellows. And, uh, she said, I'm here because I'm a department head and Ms. Watford was kind enough to get us involved in our budgets. And we've never had that before. So you've got a lot of support, not just from me as a, you know, looking in type person. But you got a lot of support from your own employees. So thank you.
I think my time is over. As I says, but
No, you got two minutes.
All right, two minutes. So I think you're right. As I said in the beginning, um, sure, if you want to terminate her, as you can, this is all clearly allowed. We never say you couldn't. But I would tell you that the contract is a promise. And if you decide you want to go another direction, you should honor the contract. And if you want her to continue on, she is still ready, willing and able to work and is ready to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I need a motion to go into executive session, legal briefing, personnel matter, certain of the chairs of Watford, public meeting. Got a motion, got a second and a discussion. On my first side, likewise, I have it. Wait until the executive session action was taken, need a motion to come out of the executive session to go back into open session.
So move second.
Got a motion, got a second and a discussion on the first side. Close likewise, I have it. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Can y'all hear us either?
Can you hear me? Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that the termination of Chavis Watford from the position of Marion County administrator be upheld.
So I mean, we got a motion, got a second and a discussion. I'm going to do a roll call. All in favor, raise your hand. Close likewise, I have it. I'm going to bend into the county. We adjourn.